All right, thank you all for being here this evening. Our regular council meeting, September 24th, 2015. All the council meetings in Slaton, brief executive session. It's good to see you all here tonight. Mr. Manning, if you don't mind, would you be willing to lead us in our invocation and pledge to the flag? If everyone would please stand.
My heavenly Father, we've come to you today, Lord, we thank you for another opportunity, Father, for you to make the right choice, let's each one honor to our children who are sick and afflicted. The Lord will move to all of us, and we'll take you with us, and thank you for loving us, Jesus. One, two, three, to the flag, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have the roll call, please.
Mayor Lambert.
Here.
Vice Mayor Graven.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Stoll.
Here.
Mayor of City Manayor Williams.
Here.
City Mayor.
Thank you again for being here this evening. Mr. Manning, I'd like you to lead us in our invocation and pledge. I trust everyone has had opportunity to review the agenda. Minutes from the September 3rd call meeting, as well as the minutes of the September 10th agenda work session, and the September 10th regular council meeting, also August 2015 Treasury Report. Play motion, please. You have a motion to be heard, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a question about the Treasury Report.
Yes, sir.
I noticed at the end that high school is done for two months and high school is done for one month. General fund, spending first, it's done for two months, then you get back on state street eight, and there are packages up for one month. Seven hundred and thirty-three, is it? You're saying sixteen, one bill number two.
Yeah, the actual figures are two months, I mean, we just forgot to change. That will be, we have a chance at manual, we're not to read one of those.
Too much.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anything else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Graven.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Yes. We can read our list out here. We'll now entertain communication from citizens. We have a signing list. If you did not have an opportunity to sign the list, we will come back around at the end of, at the end of the citizen communication, and get more, get more opportunity to comment at that point. If you are a citizen of the city of East Ridge, or a business owner here in the city, and have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this is your opportunity to do so. As soon as we go through this list, you'll have an opportunity to come, excuse me, come forward to one of the two microphones here at the front, and state your name and address on the record, and you will have up to five minutes. First person we have on the list is Laura Siniger, 725 Germantown Circle.
I have a couple of questions. When I was reviewing the agenda for tonight's meeting, you have, part of the meeting is being approval of the changes on Ringgold Road. On page eight of that phase two, it refers to the placing of grassed medians, and the location of continuous center turn lane of Ringgold Road, and that phase is from Congress to Bellboard. There's currently not a center turn lane in part of that area. Is this including a new turn lane being added? That's very essential, that's where the Walmart's going in.
It is, and others may be able to chime in as well. At one time a year past, there actually was a partial median in that area, and the roadway is actually wide enough to create a center turn lane and a median. And so what will happen essentially is a restriping, and the addition of those partial medians in three small areas. But it's going to be reached, the road is going to be reached, and it is wide enough to accommodate two lanes of traffic on each side, and a median in the middle.
Okay, so there will not be adding a turn lane in that area?
It will be a period of, it will not be consistent.
All the way down?
Yes, but the median will actually be broken up ever so often, and then you'll have that turn lane ever so often, so it will still be.
But you'll be adding that turn lane? There's currently not one there?
That's correct.
Okay. The second question has to do with part of what's on the agenda for the discussion of the Ringgold Inspection Program. I wanted to simply make a couple of statements. This has been brought before the council several times over the last three to five years. Someone has stated that they actually had brought some information, and a packet was prepared, and given to the council members, but not brought up for discussion. I would like to suggest that, in consideration of this program or ordinance, that it be an annual inspection, but no set dates, so they can't get ready for it, and with a re-inspection if necessary. Secondly, that it can be done without complaint from someone staying there, that it would be for health reasons, of the emold pests, how they clean the rooms. I know someone who used to clean a long time ago, they don't wash those bed spreads, and I'd like to know what they put in those unmarked bottles that they clean with, because it could be just basically water and soap, and that's not really sanitizing. Also, if these inspections are going to be done, they would include structural integrity, and which pieces of soffits would be removed, pieces of siding in the buildings, whether it be brick siding stuck up, to look at the integrity of the actual structure, as has been done in the past. The going in and tearing off soffits, I know at the house I'm currently residing in, my father replaced the soffits from the wood with vinyl, and that those items should all be very much included in any discussions. I think there's a lot of questions to do with this, and like I said, being on the agenda. I know there's a lot of technical things I don't know about how to get it onto the agenda, what information you need, but I think that those are particularly valid points. I know everything is done the way it needs to be, I have a question about that. I also have a question as to, there's a lot of public comment about, we don't want affordable, low-income housing in East Ridge, we don't want that kind of people, we don't want Section Eight. I don't know as to the legalities of limiting Section Eight. I think there are probably legalities as to how you can limit businesses and such on that, that could possibly be helpful for people to know what the legality is, on what limits you face as to setting any kind of limits to that. I'm also curious, when you say, "Let's have a workshop," how many hours are you talking? What kind of workshop do you mean, and what do you do at a workshop?
Typically, a workshop would normally be, could be as short as an hour, for this group, usually not that short.
I would hope not, but a whole employee handbook can lead by back on making discussions.
We've had workshops that have run three to four hours before, so it can be fairly lengthy, and it's really an opportunity to hash out ideas, make suggestions, and there is, these days, there was a change in our charter last year, so now at any workshop we have, if action can be taken by council, citizens have opportunity to comment during, at some point during that workshop. So there's that component as well. But yeah, it's rare for us to have a workshop that is less than probably an hour and a half, two hours.
Well, I would hope so, I know most, Stephen and Smont Church, a workshop takes four hours.
Yeah, and it depends on the issue, a lot of the kinds of things, like the employee handbook, that is a pretty massive undertaking. We already had one, I think we spent a couple of hours on it, this is a second one. If we had a workshop, I think we've had a workshop about building standards somewhat recently, it was a few months back, and we spent an hour and a half, two hours talking about that, probably we'll have another to discuss that further.
I would think buildings would be defined?
It's really a matter of, things like the sign ordinance, you know, do we want to continue to see the pole signs along Ringgold Road, or do we want to kind of transition to something that's a little, a little less in your face? Yes.
I was noticing that they're hoping that E can be a little bit underground utilities, which would be handy when we have ice stores.
Right, so that's generally what workshops entail, it just really depends on the subject matter, as far as how long it lasts.
They are announced, you know?
They are, absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right.
And then we'll usually post them on the website, but also we'll probably have a little flashing thing on our sign up front here.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Next, we have Mandy DeGlopper, 706 Tyrone Lane.
Honestly, she took a big portion of what I had to say, because my question was about the median also. And so there is going to be a turn lane in front of the Walmart neighborhood store on that part of Ringgold Road, is that right?
We'll have to look at the plan to see exactly where the turn lane would be.
Yeah, I think it might be a little fair to say, or unfair, I'm sorry, it might be a little unfair to say that is exactly where it's going to be at. We don't know exactly the plans that they're putting out there. We've got pictures, we're still in the early stages of this, as far as the exact design, the feet, exactly the location.
Yeah.
But from what I'm understanding, these islands will not be as long as the old islands that we used to have many years ago here on Ringgold Road, we'll still have access to different businesses within time like that.
Yeah, I just know that how bad that traffic backs up just from Bojangles, so I can just imagine what a brand-new, even mini Walmart would do. And when T-Dot was here last week, giving their presentation, I asked them about it, and they, they basically threw everything back on the city, you know? That if the city wanted a light, or they wanted a turn lane, they had to ask for a study to be done, and they would do a study, and they decided they needed it, or want, you know, make arrangements for that to happen. They, you know, they basically said, "They're not responsible, because it's within city limits, if we want it done, we have to ask for it." And so that's why I decided to come here, to find out if we've asked for it, if they've done one, because they said, "Well, I don't know, if the city asks us to do one, the city's got to copy." So have we asked for one? Has anyone checked into that at all? I mean, because.
I think, yeah.
You have to know it's going to be bad.
Because there's an area out there across the street that's, I think he had checked in on it.
We'll have to, we'll have to look deeper, but I seem to recall the same thing, that Andrew did ask for some kind of evaluation to be done, and I think T-Dot, I think T-Dot may have been involved.
But does anything have been done?
Honestly, I don't understand T-Dot's response like that, because, I mean, they're saying how would they control it, so.
They said they control it outside of the city, but that in the city, I don't know, those guys are spin doctors, you know how they are, "It's a partnership with the city, so the city has to ask us, and blah, 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 and, you know, it's all your fault." So I just, I don't, I mean, it's in October, it's a little late to do anything on it now, but I imagine it's going to be a problem pretty quickly, and so that's, that's just why I wanted to ask. The other thing I wanted to just quickly mention is, I don't know if anyone on the council's been approached about the high school, I know it's an ongoing issue, and all I want to say is that if a deal's worked out, where we supply some piece of equipment for the stadium, then maybe the city should get some sort of long-term maintenance plan, where the city provides maintenance for the piece of equipment, not the county, because the county strap rack are not going, you know, I mean, it's 60 years of letting something rot is not, you know, making me feel comfortable about spending money for it. So that's all I'll say, it's like, I don't know if there's a way to work that out, where if we buy bleachers, they throw a few dollars towards us to provide maintenance for those bleachers on an ongoing term, but to me, that would make, that would be the most economical sense in using our money. Otherwise, we'd just be buying something that the county has on a continual basis shown that they do not maintain, they do not take care of, and they let it just go to waste, and that's not good, it's not good for us, or the kids, or anyone else for that matter.
And I was having a conversation today with someone who, you know, I mentioned, obviously, that what we've, what we've all seen and heard about is the home side of the stadium, but there are other maintenance issues that you really have to take a long, hard look at, the lights, how old are the lights? It hasn't been but about five or six years since our insurance carrier, TML, came to us and said, "Guys, you've got to replace these lights at Camp Jordan, or we're not going to cover you," because, because they're old, and they're dangerous, you've got cones leaning, and it's a liability issue, so we had to go in and replace those lights. I don't know when the lights at the stadium were replaced last, you have concrete all around the playing field, that's starting to crack and crumble, and.
Well, I think it doesn't end there, it extends well beyond that. I mean, I went down that road today, just happened to look to my left, past the tennis courts that have the poles leaning in, that are completely rusted through, and, you know, the ground is the opposite of level, I'm sure if a ball bounced off that, it would not go straight. So, you know, it makes you think, that's like the opposite of pioneer pride, and does the city, does the city want to put money into something that's just going to be allowed to get like that in 25 years, or in 15 years, or something like that? And that's why I just wanted to say something, I didn't know if anything was happening, but if it is, you know, making sure that our investment in our children is protected, maintained, just not flushed down the drain is, it's important to me, because when my kids are older, that'll be 15-year-old equipment, and if it's not maintained properly, it's going to be junk, you know?
I can say for sure, there will be ongoing discussions with superintendent, and the, I'm sure the school board member will be involved, and I can tell you that for a fact, those conversations will be had as we look forward. I believe I actually talked about some of these things at the school board meeting, you know, a little preview of what was going to be said, so.
Great.
Yeah, it's, I agree with you that definitely, whatever money the city invests in athletic facilities that will benefit the high school, there has to be some kind of protection of that investment.
Absolutely.
It can't just be, can't just be, okay, here's our contribution, you know, let's not look at it.
Yeah, it's easy for it to check to feel good, but that doesn't, you know, doesn't protect our investments. Thank you, thank you, Anna.
Have you talked to county, look for county with this?
No, I haven't talked to them at all, because they're not sure what they're going to do yet, but I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, honestly, the county's going to blow my money anyway, if they fit, and you guys seem to listen better to the taxpayers than they do, and I just want to make sure that if they're going to waste their money, then we're not wasting ours, you know? And, but I do, if they're going to spend money to do something there, then I'm going to voice my opinion to them as well, that maintenance, maintenance is important, you know, and it's not just, it's not just the football field, or the tennis courts, it's the high school itself. We have a brand-new one on that tree, that if it's not taken care of, it's going to rot too, just like everything else. And that's not, that's not how we say, "Families come to East Ridge, because future generations are going to be provided for," you know, that's sending the wrong message.
Yeah, you need to talk to county with this tape, I think there are tensions.
I will, if Dave Tessard ever answers my phone calls, I'll tell him too. Thank you.
Thank you. County Commissioner.
I do want to mention, this is a good time to mention it, there was a, a good meeting of the, of some alumni from East Ridge High School, it was just passing Monday, Bobby Hudson's kind of, I guess, dissipated that meeting, there were about probably 30, 35 people there. There you go, that's exactly right, no, Dick was there, he covered that, absolutely, and you can read all about it, East Ridge News Online.
Thank you.
Shameless plug.
I thought you were going to have to wait until that.
They are, we have a high school meeting, seven o'clock, this upcoming Monday, at the high school, in the library, that's great. And there was, it was interesting to see the dynamics of that group, people who were there literally when the school was built, to people who graduated in the 90s. It was, it was a diverse group, a good group, all interested in saying what's best for the school and the city. I would encourage anyone who's interested to come out on a day night, see where we go from here. Next person on our list is Ben Strickland, and I don't have a street number, but at Prater Road. Hi there.
Because I'd like to present a petition to keep Spirit Week laws closed.
You certainly, you're free to present that to us?
I just want to.
Yes, please, it's due. In terms of.
It's not that simple, because we were trying to, I heard you were trying to.
Okay, well, I will give that to our attorney, and I don't know, I don't know legally what could, could happen, you know, what, what the, what voice the city would have in doing that, but again, sort of, you're free to present that, especially the attorney now has, has that information, and we will go with that.
I think it's very important, because it's a, it's a money trap for lonely child families. Yes, it provides a place to live, but it also attracts all bad, so therefore your children are around that stuff, and it's just ongoing, ongoing, ongoing. Sitting down is the most blessing that can happen to anyone who lived there. Yes, some are still displaced, but at the end of the day, it's still a blessing if they don't have to go back. Yes, we all lived there, but now that we've had an opportunity to get out, my wife and I have put on, and now we don't have to be there, and it's my goal to make sure it doesn't open back up, it's the way they treat you when you're there. Like, I wasn't going to have to voice this, living there, or I'd be thrown out, so now that I'm thrown out, I'm here to voice my opinion.
Thanks, sir.
And I'd like to also add, if I could, the local churches in the area have displaced families, if anything, make the city completely kind of help a little bit, anything, I don't know the exact number, there's quite a few families that still don't have a place to go, you know, and I feel if they add a little boost, that maybe they get the incentive to dust off and move forward, because all these people are waiting for an open back up, and it's just going to suck them right back into the same situation, you know, never better itself.
I think some of the things that we may, may have talked about on this agenda could come speak to, to some of that, in terms of families who have a need.
I mean, there's definitely a need for lonely child housing, but we've said for years, if they would screen people before they entered the room, it would cut out a lot of the refractive drug use and all the stuff that makes the place so bad, you know, because there is quite a few families that were just like us, you know, down our luck, have nowhere else to go, but you're surrounded by people you just don't, you know, have a clue, there's a squad, it's a drug epidemic, you know, so if they would just screen people, I would have a lot, but the way they do it is just unreal, and it's absolutely unreal. I'm here to voice my opinion, and that's what I'm here for. I appreciate if you guys will look at that, and maybe possibly keep it, keep it closed.
Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Next one on our list, sorry, unfortunately, I cannot read the signature.
I think it's my wife.
It starts with E, it looks like, I'm sorry, I just.
That's my wife, she stepped in.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
My daughter's something.
Gotcha, okay.
I'll speak to her.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next one we have is Pam Stone, 1557 Cora Drive.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I've never been here before. I moved to East Ridge and bought a home a year and a half ago. Cora Drive, as you may or may not know, is off of Greenslake Road. The first thing I noticed was every time I turn from Ringgold Road to Greenslake Road, I'm having near misses with cars coming one way while I go the other, they don't know where the curb from Greenslake to Kingswood is. I called the city offices and asked for it to be restripped in May of 2014. I know some work was being done on the road, and I thought maybe that prevented it from being restripped, but that's long past, and since then I've suffered eight or 10 more near misses. Really like it to look into striping that curb, so people can see where it is, and especially at night, so put some little reflectors there, so people can see it, it's a pretty dark area, there's no street light, but reflective lumps, whatever they're called, with, they're caught up in the headlights, and they'd see it even if they don't see the street.
It's kind of a tough little area, there, Greenslake, and then also where John Ross cuts across Greenslake, it's kind of, kind of a hill, and it turns, and I can see how you could have some difficulty there.
And speaking of that whole road, there are several traffic lights there, and I'm curious as to how they're controlled. It seems that there's some magic sensor that knows I'm coming to the traffic light, and it changes, and it turns red, and that's not one, that's all three, and that's not occasionally, it's every time. I learned as a 20-year resident of Red Bank, that TML does not allow traffic devices to control speed, so if that magic sensor is there to change the light to control speed, I don't think TML would approve.
I don't think it's at its own time.
Well, occasionally, once I stop at the Red, I've counted at Bennett Road, and it lasts for as long as. and it lasts for as long as ten seconds and changes back to green.
They already stood up back there, he said some loop, you could go up on that loop, and that says...
Well, there's usually no one in the opposite direction, or in perpendicular direction. It's just me coming downhill, no other cars around, suddenly it's red. Ten seconds later, it's green, so I can go along. The one at, at John Ross is not quite so bad, obviously. We have the school traffic in the mornings. Now, that might need to be extended, because a lot of mornings, you cannot leave Greenslake Road and go on towards Ringgold Road, because traffic is blocking the intersection trying to get to the school. And that's unfortunate for those people, and for those of us trying to get to work. The next thing I wanted to ask about, is there an ordinance in the city that prevents where campers or RVs are set up and lived in?
I think there is.
Okay? Well, I would assume that in front of a business is not an acceptable location.
You would say not.
Are you talking to the person going across, Tom Ross?
At Greenslake and Bennett, there is a red brick building of some business. An athletic sign is over one of the doors. And since the spring of this year, early spring, March, there has been a small RV parked in front of that location. And there is a power cord going from the RV into the business. I thought at first, well, they're just working on it. It's convenient, no problem. Months and months and months have gone by, and there are lights on in the RV at night when I come home from church. You know, it's dark now, and there are lights on inside the RV. And as I say, that power cord goes from the RV directly into the door of the business. Not what I would think would be... The last thing I wanted to mention, Mayor Lambert, you put out a call to citizens to get their input on rebranding and renaming Ringgold Road. I've been in the area, as I said, I was in Red Bank for twenty years, since the early eighties. Ringgold Road is East Ridge's identity. That's how people all over, and visitors who come to Camp Jordan from out of state, out of the city, that's how they know where they are. Rebranding has been a fad in the last few years. Not necessarily a good fad. What if Coca-Cola decided to rebrand themselves? That would not be a good thing. They would lose their brand loyalty, and they'd have to fight and fight and fight to get it back.
Yeah, I, I understand, certainly. I appreciate your feedback. That's, that's why I...
And in addition to that reason, there are literally hundreds of businesses on Ringgold Road. And your comment in the agenda session was that, um, that you could talk to some of the business owners, and they were not opposed. But that doesn't take into account all the business owners, who would have to spend a lot of money and a lot of time if their addresses were suddenly changed, if they have stationery that would have to be rebranded.
I did address that as well. If, if you give them a twelve, fourteen-month transition period, I've, I talked to, I get several business owners who said, you know, they'd order stationery for three years.
Right.
You know, they, they, you know, over the course of twelve, fourteen months, they, they would use up what they have, and they can simply reorder. As far as, as far as we go, road being our identity, you know, I mentioned in the, the last meeting as well, that's, if, if that's our identity, that's a kind of a sad statement for cities.
We can improve without changing the name. You can certainly improve.
Why, why would we advertise another city, though? And, and if it's a side street, you know, there, Georgia Avenue downtown, downtown Chattanooga. Now, I don't have a problem with that. I think there would be, there would be an issue if Market Street downtown was Atlanta Avenue, or, or any number of other things. It's, it's the main thoroughfare through town, and so my feeling is, it's, it would be great if it could actually reflect our city instead of telling people the most important thing about this road is that eventually it gets you to Ringgold, Georgia. And that's what it tells people.
I'm not sure that it does. Uh, it's, Tammy and the Trail in Florida is very pop, you know, very popular, and that's what we call that, for many, 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 many years. Probably a hundred and twenty-five years. We don't need to change it. That's where it is. That's how people know it. That's how they know where to get. I, I certainly appreciate your wanting to improve. I'm not sure changing any. Thank you all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, we did have one more on here. David Springs. Thirty-three, thirty-five, Ringgold Road, Suite One O Two.
I have been a resident of East Ridge for twenty-three years. And I'm actually very glad that we moved here from California to East Ridge, residents of the other surrounding areas. And I wouldn't mind at all if Ringgold Road was changed to East Ridge, full of art, or something like that. But, uh, anyway, I've been also a small business owner for a year and a half with fledging political business, and that's the address of the business owner there. I was recently instructed by a city official that I had to remove, uh, one of my most important signs from, in front of my unit. And it seemed rather strange to me that it'd been up for a year and a half since I opened the store in February of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, and nobody had said anything up to that point, that it does sit right in front of a stone structure that facilitates a marquee that's been there since the area was built. There's also an American flag and flagpole up front, and my sign's considered a flag, so simply because it has the name of my business on it. Therefore, it violated some kind of city ordinance. And I asked if there were any exceptions to that city ordinance, and she said, "Well, yes, there was, but however, my sign didn't fall into any of the categories that would exempt it." Well, it's a flag. It's a, it's a flag, but it's a new kind of flag, one that sits on a stand and turns on a spindle. I'm sure you've seen it. Looks somewhat like a inverted teardrop. And it's, I've done a survey, and it's, it facilitates at least fifty percent of the new customers that walk in the door. And, uh, I'm still operating in the red, being only a year and a half old. And I need that sign, because most of the people that come on my store for the first time come in because of that sign. So, uh, I, I'm wondering if there's any kind of exemption available. I bought the sign listed. Y'all wanna see it?
Thank you very much. After the meeting, I will, I would love to see the sign, actually. But also, I, I do want to mention this. Within the last year or so, uh, we actually had a, as was mentioned earlier, we had a workshop about, uh, building standards and also potential alterations to the sign ordinance, uh, because we had some business owners, small business owners, come to us and say, "The current ordinance is really, really strict, and it prevents me from being able to, to advertise the way we would like to be able to advertise." And, um, and we want to be as, as business-friendly as we can. So that's, that's really what prompted us to, to have the workshop and begin working on revisions to the sign ordinance. Those are still in progress. I don't know what we can do in the meantime, but this is, this is exactly the kind of, of case that led us to that discussion to begin with. We, we don't want to, to run people off or, or shut them down, shut down businesses, because our sign ordinance is the strictest around. And it is, it is very, very strict. So I would, would like to revisit that conversation, and sometimes things happen that, that kind of get us off track a little bit. We, we talk about something, and, and then there are so many things going on, we, we lose sight of it. I would like to revisit that. Uh, I think it's, it's very important. Anybody else want to make...
My last question is, is there any kind of exemption available? Because I've already noticed that most people come to the door since I take the sign.
Is, is there anything that, that we could do temporarily?
Is that something I would, I would take, I'm sorry. I would take what goes on that to, uh, as far as exceptions, I don't, I don't know.
Well, the funny thing is, it sits right...
I don't, I don't know what your sign was. I don't know what the sign, was you given, actually given a citation because of the flag?
No, she said, "Remove it." All right, but take it down immediately. It sits on a stand, it swirls on a stand, and it sits immediately in front of a permanent brown structure that serves as a marquee. And so it, it doesn't block any traffic, it's not anybody's way, and it's almost part of the reason of the structure that's been there for years. And it's another flag, and it seems to me like if one flag is allowed, the other one might be allowed.
I want you to, I want you to...
Okay. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you. Have that sign or...
The sign there is, right, it's, uh, one eleven, one seventeen, Prohibiting Signs. Says, "Out here, uh, out of eye, signs that move, revolve, quarrel, rotate or flash, including animated signs, multi-prism signs, beacon license set, prior to federal aviation agencies, rather than federal national agencies." So here it is, Prohibiting Quarrel Sign. So that's, you know, that's one of, one of the things that we were addressing, so...
I'm sorry, I missed that. What was that?
I've kept the ordinance here in my hand all the way here. Thing, and this is one of the things that we were addressing back when we were discussing sign ordinance. And your sign is prohibited according to this, and that was one of the things we were going to discuss. So... Scott, I'll stop you.
How, how did we, how, how quickly, I guess, can we go back and revisit this subject? Because I don't, I don't even remember exactly how long ago it's been.
March and Avenue?
March.
There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that have been explained, and there's a lot of things that, that need to be changed with sign ordinance. I think, I think, like you said, you know, to, uh, to do all that, to take that, to find the time, you know, the time to review, uh, for follow slide. There is a lot of changes that need to be made with the sign ordinance.
I would be, would possible, if we could just straighten it out, just, you know, put the sign back up a few of it?
I would say, I would say probably not right now, but let's have Chief Williams look into the issue and, and come back and let us know what, what could be done, what, what may be possible. You know, and, and years ago, it's been, I guess, two thousand and six, or something like that, when the sign ordinance was passed. The intentions were good. The intentions were, let's, let's, let's clean up Highway forty-one a little bit. Maybe, maybe the city went a little too far. I, I think it is, it's clearly very strict what the sign ordinance is, and, and I just don't think we want to, to be that strict, I don't.
I agree with you, what you said, while I go with normal, drive vehicles is out, we need to make a change to move on.
All right. That's all on our list. Do we have anyone else who would like to, uh, to address the council?
Yes, sir.
You'll state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Um, my name is Teresa St. Clair, and I'm an East Ridge Pioneer. I attended junior high in high school here in East Ridge. I do not live in East Ridge right now, but I have strong connections to the community and deep affection for the community that I spent my youth in. And, um, I would like to have permission to address you and the council, if that's possible.
We ordinarily do not let non-residents speak or non-business owners, but you, you have communicated with me via email, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And so, uh, we'll, we'll make an exception.
Yep. Um, the reason I'm here is because of the Spirit Creek Lodge crisis with the residents and the need for funds to help these residents eventually transition into long-term housing. I have, with the help of several people, many people actually, been able to put together plans and, uh, for a music, two-day music festival that we were hoping that could be held at Camp Jordan on the weekend of October tenth and eleventh. And, um, of course, we would need the city's approval for that, and, and we need insurance, and there's many, many things that have to come together quickly. And, um, I just want to mention this as, I guess, as a starting point for you guys to consider this option, and, uh, also to point out some of the hurdles that we would have to address together to make this happen. And some of those things, Mark Rabbit has been helping them to help me, um, understand. One of them is the fact that, um, the council meetings, the second council meeting that I would need to, or really need to attend, most of the council will not be present.